And we're going to start with an invocation. Andy?
Mayors please. We're all gathered here today for this workshop to better our community. We ask that you guide our council and our Phelps executives make the right decisions for our community to move this forward. We thank you for the beautiful days that you have given us and we ask for and pray for rain as we always do. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. And in standing form, Councilwoman Williams, Councilwoman DeRro, Councilwoman Rodriguez. And now we can say the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Texas pride, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one in evangelism. If there's kind of a lack of any citizens comments. I'm going to excuse myself as I do sit on the Phelps floor so as to allow the new project and Councilman DeRro, Mayor Protem.
Today we're going to have a presentation from Phelps on the cost rate tariffs.
Okay. Well, Mayor Protem, thank you very much for having us here tonight. I want to take a second to introduce myself, introduce those opposed from Phelps. You may know or may not know, you get a chance to meet us, but my name is Kyle Dickey. I'm the general manager over at Forestville Electric Lightning Power System. Behind me is Marcy Jacobs. She is our finance manager. And to my right is Steve Moffitt. He's Schneider Engineering and that is the consulting firm that we use to do a rate and cost of service study for the electric utility, propose new rate structure and they do other things for us as well as financial planning and long-range financial advising as well as wholesale power supply issues and then also will help us with the bond issuance project that we have been doing for late this year. So Steve has a long history of working with municipal systems and specifically electric utility groups within it. He's worked with large systems, small systems and everything in between. Weatherford, Brady to Robstown, Cuero, of course Phelps, and they also rent them and everything in between. So Steve's got a lot of experience doing this various sort of thing. I'll give you a quick overview before we get into the presentation of what we did and why we did it. The biggest thing that we did is what's called a cost of service study. That is a study of the customer base of the electric utility system and determination of which customer class costs the utility, how much money to operate that system. For example, what are the residential customers' cost of Phelps to serve them? What are the commercial customers, what are the industrial customers, the schools, the ballparks, outdoor recreation, whatever you want to call it? This is a study that has not been done at Phelps since 1998 and so the new, I'm sorry, correction, 1988 was the last time this was done. So we were looking at 26 years and since we had gone through the system and looked at the cost of service to see if the rates we're charging are the right rates. In 1988, the study was commissioned and in 1989, we put the current rate structure in place that we have today. Now, the rates are not the same as they were in 1989. The structure and the way we bill about billing the different customers has been the same. What we've done historically over the past 25 years is anytime Phelps issued debt for capital projects, they would make a determination of what amount of money we needed to fund that debt payment and we would put that in as a rate increase and just an assessment across the system. So we had the rates set in 1989. A few years later, we issued debt. It was determined, for example, that it was a 3% increase. They took every component of the rate and just raised it by 3%. Three years later, we issued debt. They said, this year we want to be 2.5%. For example, they just add everything, 2.5% to every component across the board. That is not a terrible solution in the short term. Unfortunately, that's not a sustainable solution over 25 years. So what we're looking at now is our customers are getting billed on a structure that was put in place in 1988 when the system was half the size of this today. We are in excess of 15,000 connected meters right now in our system. When this study was done in 1988, we had less than 7,500 meters. So that alone should tell you that the rate structure and the rate format done in 1988 was good and accurate then, things have changed in 25 years over time. We also, back then, were about half residential, half commercial back then. Now, we have close to 12,000 residential customers and only about 3,000 commercial customers. So I mean, that's something else that has switched. The growth that's come in in our system over the last 25 years has been largely residential. So what we did is we took data from 2012. That was the most complete years worth of data we had and we used that as what we called a test year. And we looked at the data from that year and say, all right, how many residential customers we have? How many commercial? And not just how many commercial, what size are they? Are they mostly small commercial, ballpark type places? Are they the medium-sized commercial, which you might look at, for examples, here in town, might be a Whataburger or you build up barbecue places of that size? Or are they mostly large commercials like the hospital or the Walmart supercenter? For example, Lissy and Echol, the big grain elevator down in Pope. And we broke it down from there. And then we had other customers out there that we were billing on a school rate. But the problem with that rate was not every school meter was on the school rate. So we had some inconsistencies and inaccuracies with some of the schools and even just within, for example, the Forestville School District. It's not like Forestville was on one rate, Stockdale was on another. Within the Forestville School District, some of their meters were getting built at this one rate, some of their meters are getting built at another rate. And we needed to clean that up and get that more consistent across the board. We had another rate in the system and we just called it ballpark lighting and that was a rate that was set up 25 years ago for little league parks and things of that nature. We'd get, put them on a special rate because they are a very different and unique type of customer. They don't use electricity like a home does or a business does. But the problem is, over time, that got expanded to include things like rodeo arenas, roping arenas here in the area. So those fell into ballpark lighting. And then before you know it, some of them had session stands and so that changed things. So we really needed to take the time to do, quite frankly, 25 years' worth of cleanup on this. It's typical in the electric utility world to do these rate and cost of service studies roughly every four to five years. And when you do them every four to five years, the cleanup is not as bad because your customer base has not changed drastically in four to five years like it would have changed in 25. So the plan for this, what we put forth is we did this rate and cost of service study. We came up with a new structure of rates. And the plan is to do this again in 2018 so we can look back and see, did we make any mistakes in 2014? So it's a lot easier to correct that after four years' worth of billing versus 25 years' worth of billing. So that's an overview of what we did and more importantly, it's an overview of why we did it. We didn't just do this for the sake of doing the study. What we had found, and we'll go into it in the presentation a little bit more in depth, is that we found certain rate classes were subsidizing other rate classes. We find this rate classes, quite frankly, were paying too much for the electricity and these were paying too little. And not to ruin the surprise here, but what we found is our residential customers in the system, not just in Forestville, but in the rural areas and the other municipal areas, the residential customers were subsidizing commercial customers, which means our residential customers for quite some time have been paying more than their fair share compared to the commercial customers. And what we've done is we put a rate structure together and a set of rates together that corrects that problem. So I'll give you a quick summary of that. The good news of this cost rate, cost of service study is the residential customers are going to receive very good for some of this if approved as presented by the city council. And so that's something that should make 12,000 of our 15,000 meters of residential customers will see a big benefit from this. Why, I don't know, it's a big benefit, a benefit from this rate and cost of service. So what we'll do is we have a presentation for you. It's short, it's about 12 pages long. And in this package, we'll hand one to each of you and we have plenty for everybody. We've brought some extras for the crowd. For the crowd now, I should say. We'll do the same thing that we did the other day, but if you'd like another one, we'll do it. Good. Okay. Did everybody get a copy? What we'll do is there's two things you'll see in this package and I'll talk for a little bit, Steve will talk for a little bit. Marcy's here, if you have any questions of her, speak of things, how it directly affects the budget and things of that nature. But you'll see two handouts in your package. This is the presentation we're going to go through. Like I said, it's about 12 slides. This one you have here, this is the actual rate structure that we'll propose. This is how the tariffs will be written when we put them into the, you know, into action. And so what you'll find with this is, well, we'll just go through the presentation. At any point, if you have any questions, feel free to stop us. Interject, I don't think we have to wait to the end. We'd like for this to be a back and forth discussion. Most importantly, we want to come out of this knowing that you have as much information presented to you as unique. We don't want to bog you down. We're interested to have another meeting at 6:30. It's time-certain, so we want to be respectful of that. I will tell you now, if we don't accomplish what you want to accomplish tonight, we'll be more than happy to schedule another workshop at a later date. We'll be very, want to be as accommodating of your schedule as possible. I don't want you to feel like you're being forced to approve something that you're not comfortable approving or that don't have all the knowledge on this. Do we have any questions before we can start?
When are you looking at that, putting these rates into effect?
Well, whatever, whenever we get the approval from the council, we'll put it into effect on the first or the bottom. So let's say we get this approved by council and department today, July 12th, I think the meeting is, oh, June? Yeah, June 12th, goodness. June 12th meeting, we put them into effect on July 12th. We want to make sure we'll put them and we'll give you the effective date whenever the client comes. We want to make sure we don't do it in the middle of a billing cycle, for example, where half of the customers in the system get a bill at one set of rates and the other set get another set of rates. So we'll wait till we finish billing a full cycle, bills are mailed out, bills are sent and then we'll put the new rates into place so they're ready for the next billing cycle and so on. So what you'll see, of course, the first page is cover page, but slide two here is what is a cost of service study? And it's just four bullet points here that we have. Cost, it's what I talked about a little bit, a little bit before. Cost of service study, it's an evaluation of the allocation of utilities' cost to serve its different classes of customers. And what this does, it allocates revenue in accordance with the costs associated with those classes. Short story is, we want to make sure the residential customers are paying what it costs to serve residential customers. Commercial customers are doing the same. In simple terms, it costs the utility more to serve a commercial customer than it does a residential customer. Typically taller poles, higher grade of wire, three transformers versus one transformer, metering sets more expensive. Think what we have to invest into a commercial customer to come to the territory, quite often the cost of the utility more than it does for a residential customer, for example. The third thing that a cost of service study provides, utility, governing body and a management tool assesses the revenues and costs and their impact on the customer class to serve a utility. And the key of the cost of service is each rate class should account for costs associated with serving that rate class. In other words, we don't want the residential customers subsidizing and paying more than their fair share for the commercial, but by the same token, you don't want it the other way around either. That if you have the resident, if the commercial customer's subsidized residential, well, then that does something like it stunts economic development. Businesses learn that, hey, we'd love to go put something in in Wilson County, but the Phelps rates are so high for commercial customers, keep the residents happy. If it's not worth our while, we'll go to GVC or we'll go to Orange territory to build their expense. So Steve, you can jump in at any time. If I miss speed or if you have something I can add. We started this back in October of last year and I mentioned before, it hadn't been done in over 20 years. And the scope of work included evaluation of the costs associated for operating Phelps, including, again, the appropriate allocation and distribution for all the costs, the financial assessment of the utility, adjustments and modifications to the current structure and adjustments and adaptation of rate tariffs, update and modernize the tariffs. One of the things we're going to talk about here as we go along, we have what's called a declining block on the way we bill our customers. For example, when you use electricity in your home, your first certain set of kilowatt-hours of those 200 kilowatt-hours are billed at a certain rate. Your next group of kilowatt-hours from your 201st kilowatt-hour you use up to about your 500 or 600 kilowatt-hour is billed at a lower rate. And then when you get beyond 600 kilowatt-hours, those kilowatt-hours are billed at an even lower rate than that. So what this is doing is almost encouraging our customers to use more electricity. So for example, if you have a big home and you use 3,000 kilowatt-hours a month, you are actually paying less money per kilowatt-hour than someone who has a small efficiency one-bedroom apartment that's only using 500 kilowatt-hours a month. Now, obviously, you're told bill would be more. If you look at it on a cost of kilowatt-hour basis, the more you use, the cheaper your electricity is per kilowatt-hour. And this is problematic. And where this really hurts our customers is the low-income customers. Low-income customers oftentimes live in manufactured housing, mobile homes, inefficient houses or window units or no central heating, use space heating, so they're, have a lot of energy consumption. The more they use, it just gives them, it's almost incenting our customers to use more electricity to save money. This rate was put into place in 1988 when, in the state of Texas, we had excess generation. We had power plants being built across the state at an alarming rate. We had more electricity generation capacity in the state than we thought we'd ever use. So many utilities put in these rates to encourage people to use more electricity, run these plants that have been built and been commissioned. As you know, that's not the case in Texas anymore. We have the threats of rolling brownouts when the weather gets really cold, we're getting notifications from ERCOT to conserve energy. We don't have excess capacity in the state of Texas like we used to. So over the last 20 years, especially over the last 10 years, all the utilities in the state that had this declining block rate have gone away from it. We couldn't find another utility in the state that had declining block rate like we have here.
Well, and to add to that, the wholesale contract that you buy Energy under doesn't give you a break for more kilowatt-hours you buy from them either. So there's no, you know, you're paying, at some point, you're paying a fixed price for this kilowatt-hour from your wholesale supplier and you're getting less and less revenue from those kilowatt-hours for each customer that uses more and more electricity. So it's really, it becomes a penalty almost for the utility in terms of how they manage that revenue, so.
And as you know, we are a, we're a full requirements customer of CPS Energy, which means we buy all of our electricity from CPS Energy. We don't buy any from CPS, invest in a wind farm that we take wind from. If they invest in a solar farm, if they burn their coal plants or gas plants, that's what we take. We don't have any of our own wind farms and we don't have our own solar panels or anything like that anymore. And as you know, that here, last year, we signed with an extension, not, I'm going to say it again, it's not an extension with CPS Energy, we signed a new contract with CPS Energy and under a completely different form and a completely different billing structure. One of the things that this rate structure has done, it is a better structure to match the new contract we have with CPS Energy that begins on January 1st of 2016. So we're trying to think ahead a little bit here so that we look at the structure of wholesale power contract that we have and match that up till we bill our customers in an equitable way so that we don't have CPS billing us on a peak demand and this and that we're billing our customers under a different formula. On slide four, all the components of providing electricity, distribution to retail customers were evaluated. We looked at operation maintenance costs, we looked at delivery costs and other customer expenses, we looked at wholesale power costs from CPS Energy. We looked at utility transfers and franchise payments that we make to the cities of Forestville, Stockdale and Pope, those are franchise banks we make to La Vernea and Falls City. And as you know, utility fund transfers we use to supplement the public services were tax-based and other revenue sources cannot. That's just a fancy way of saying is that Forestville, Stockdale and Pope bought this system for a reason. It's a way for the cities to make, to make money. Because if you didn't own this system and the system was owned by GVC or CPS Energy, you looked at money we transferred to each year, you'd have to make that money up somewhere else, you're going to drastically cut your expenses, which means, and y'all know as well as I do, the best way to at least make money outside of that is raise taxes for how popular that may be. So if you, and if you look at the bottom half of slide four, we have the fiscal year ending in 2008, '09, '10, '11 and '12. It shows you the revenue that we have each year, 26.4 million all the way up to 29.7 million in 2012. And it shows the transfer that we made to each of the owner's cities. It was just four, five short years ago, we were at 750,000, we were transferring out. Now we're already at 935,000 transferring out. And you can see there at the bottom line, the pretenses we transfer hovers right around the 3% mark. There's some years that we pay a little more than 3%, some we pay a little less, but you see the overall average is right at 3%, which is outlined in the system agreement. We have a margin, we have a margin of a wholesale cost in 2012 was about 3 cents a kilowatt-hour. So the long story short on that is, this is very simplistic terms, that we look at what we're billed, CPS Energy bills us and then we look at what we bill our customers and it's about a 3 cents per kilowatt-hour. Hate to use this word, but profit for the utility, that's what we make over what we have to pay to CPS Energy for a, now I call that profit, but then we have to reinvest in the system and pay our employees and make our transfers to the cities. So it's not like we're out there making a profit like Walmart or HEB does. And so.
But it is an important understanding for customers to know that they get a bill for 10 cents kilowatt-hour, 10 cents kilowatt-hour, that's not going to Phelps. They have to turn out and pay, you know, six and a half to seven and a half to CPS Energy. 3 is what Phelps is operating the system on. But then I would tell you, from all the work that I've done on cost of service and rates, I think that's a pretty competitive margin of wholesale cost. I see this fee on utilities to be anywhere between 3 and 4 cents a kilowatt-hour. So to me, on the lower end of that range of 3 to 4 cents, if they're operating a competitive or a tight ship, so to speak, of distribution, that's good, you know, continue to be there.
And one of the things, again, we're operating under this agreement with CPS Energy now through the end of 2015. So roughly another year and a half that we have of this former contract with CPS Energy. So what we've done is when we signed the new contract with CPS Energy, we put out RFP for these services, something Phelps had not ever done before. And so we entertained probably 15 or so, 14 or 15 responses from different power companies to serve energy or serve power to the Phelps system. We ultimately signed with CPS Energy, but the other thing you did is signal to CPS Energy, we weren't just going to blindly sign with them. Again, if you want to get our business here at Phelps going forward, you have to own that business and you've got to come in at a better price than company X and company Y. And we had some back and forth negotiations and we named our three finalists. Quite honestly, we named the three finalists, it wasn't the most. And we let them know, you're not in first place, you're not going to win this. We've been with you for 75 years. I said, I appreciate that, but I'm not going to pay, ask our customers to pay a premium for electricity just because we have a 75-year history. You want our business down here. We're a good moneymaker for CPS Energy. So we held them up by their ankles and shook all the change out of their body. If this is also done, they came in loving. So I told them, I love you guys at CPS, I really do, but I got 15,000 bosses that I'm going to answer to and I'm going to.
Who were the other two?
It was Garland Power and Light and Bryan Texas Utilities, ETU.
But they were, they were on the transmission, right? There's just a, it'd be a wholesale.
Right, it's just wholesale power. Yeah, wholesale power. CPS Energy, I say always, for the foreseeable future, will always be our transmission provider. ERCOT hasn't messed too much with the, with the transmission side of things like that in wholesale power.
But the transmission system in Texas is an open access transmission system. Anybody's going to be allowed. So in the future, we get to a point at the end of the CPS contract where you've got options again, you have another fifteen companies that will be able to serve you if they can serve you.
Yeah, CPS Energy doesn't bear our contract next time, they're not allowed to block company X from coming in. They have to, like you said, open access, they have to. Steve, I'm going to let you take slide five.
Sure.
This is more in your, on your wheelhouse.
Yeah, I'll try to make this as simple as I can. The cost of service, we have a pretty involved model that we developed on the system, putting in all the distribution cost components, the OGN cost components. Everything, basically every dollar that gets spent providing electricity to customers on the system, we put that in a model to determine what's the right allocation of the revenue and the cost to each class of customers. So the way to read this blue chart on page five, the first column says allocated test year revenue. That's the actual revenue that was collected from that class of customers in 2012. So residential customers in 2012 paid $7,922,000 was the revenue to Phelps. General Service rate class paid $4,566,000 on down. Those are the actual revenues. We put all this in our model. The next column over, cost of service revenue allocation, says based on the costs associated with serving each class of customers, this is the revenue that should have been collected from that class of customers. So you can see realistically that the residential customers in accordance with the costs associated with serving that should have only paid $7,911,000. The General Service should have only paid $4,279,000. Our's commercial, $6,010,000, so on and so forth down the list. You can see the differences when you map that out between what they did pay and what they should have paid. At the end of the, at the end of the year, Phelps collected almost the right amount of revenue to serve the system. So we're not looking at a rate increase based on these distribution costs, it's just how those are allocated across each class of customer. The current rate structure, you know, because of where we're at, in fact, it's over 20 years old and we're in a new era of generation supply in the state and challenges that we have with the population growing in the state, I think we have an opportunity now with this rate structure to revise it, redo it, be more in line with where we are currently in today's environment. And I think this modernization going forward is going to have a benefit to the utility, not only in the current arrangement that we have with CPS and the way your costs are allocated, but even going forward to the new 2016 contract that we're on, getting our, your rate tariffs, rate tariffs are more modern to what we're doing today with the industry and that's where we're, you know, that's where we're headed with these. Questions on that?
So back to this allocate test?
Yes.
That's what you projected?
No, that was, allocate test year revenue was the actual revenue collected in 2012.
And that's on the right, the cost of service revenue?
That's what should have been collected if you had had the costs allocated appropriately and the revenues allocated appropriately.
Oh, okay. Sure.
Right, so essentially the rest.
So the second row, is that, is this based on the new study that you have? That's what you should have collected?
That's correct.
Okay. So based on the new proposed rate study? That's what you should have collected? This is what we.
And you can see the big picture is we actually collected 30.155 million and we should have collected 30.033 million. That's, you know, that's off, but you know, if you're talking about a $30 million budget, that's pretty far. You know, that's only a, you know, $122,000 off. That's, that's not a lot of money here, talking at $30 million. I'm $122,000 off when buying a pickup truck. That's a different story, but buying a year's worth of electricity is pretty close. Going on to slide six, it's just a couple of bullets here on the goals for rate design and tariffs. And we talked a little bit about this in the opening, but just going across here, we wanted to create tariffs that benefited the customer and the utility, which we think we've done. Want to clarify the tariffs to help Phelps and the customer know their relationship. And I mean, I think it's very important to us at Phelps and especially you as elected council members to know that if we can look our citizens in the eye and say, this is realistic, what you need to be paying. We're not just, have a rate structure, we're just adding 3%, adding 3%, adding 3% with no regard to how the system has changed over 25 years. Reduce redundancy between rate classes. What we've found is we, this is what I talked about before, we had some billing, I'm not going to say inequities, but we had wrong customers in the wrong rate classes and we had some rate classes that were virtually exactly the same, but yet we had two rate classes underlying the same, the same end goal. Want to modernize rates to reflect the current electric utility industry trends and issues. And this is something that, and Eric will tell you this, that I've been pushing since I got to Phelps over years ago. Phelps as a whole is in desperate need of modernization. Phelps was built out in the 50s and 60s and 70s and they could find a job building it out. The problem is, when this system started to really grow through the 90s and 2000s and especially with the oil field work that's come in over the last three or four or five years, we've still been building to the standards that were set forth in the 80s and early 90s. And we, that, we have to modernize. Standards have changed, construction units have changed, the way you bill your customers has changed. Phelps has had a little bit of an anchor tied to it, you know, and not modernize with it. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to get Phelps up to the level where the other neighboring utilities and utilities across the state are. We don't, we don't want to be the one that's, we'd like to, not the lead dog, we'd like to at least be in the middle of the pack, you know, you're the back of the pack, you never change it, so.
Is there a industry standard for construction, which is there is in the building industry or other industries?
There's several, you know, there's a National Electric Code for construction, there's RUS, the Royal Utility System. Some utilities have their own set of construction standards. I mean, there's not one that every utility across the state or across the country uses. What you find is most utilities have a hybrid of, well, I like what CPS Energy did here, so I'm going to put that in my standards. I like what Austin Energy did here. I like what's in the NEC code here and that's what we're working to do. We've been operating off of RUS standards for years, slightly modified, you know, and that was fine.
Being real, real utilities.
Yes, you know, and that was, it's an adequate set of standards, and, but I, I'd like to be better than that. We, we do a lot of things that are adequate, I, I would like to see us better than that. R U S standards are also written, back when you did nothing but string power lines from here to there. Now we have to have telecom attachments on our lines, and sometimes telecom attachments put bigger stresses and strains on our poles and whatnot than, than our own wire does. And also, we're not running little four oh copper wire anymore, we're running three thirty-six or seven ninety-five, heavy aluminum with steel core wiring, it's, it's significantly heavier. Eric will tell you, it's heavier and it's tougher to work with, and it puts more stress and strain on the, on the cross arms and insulators and everything else, and it did. So R U S standards are fine, as long as you're building out two rural utility systems to farmhouses and chicken houses, when you're building out the oilfield lines, you're building the Walmart, you're building the hospital, or the Texalloy plant, places like that, you just need a little stricter standards and higher standards than what R U S has done. And then the last, the last thing on slide six, that last one in the, in the brownish square, is correct for found customer inconsistencies, and this is where we just want to make sure we get the right customers in the right rate class. Slide seven is a, is a little bit, it's just a recap of what I said before, the modernization of tariffs needed due to several factors. The current rate are encouraging our customers to use more energy. It's from an era of an excess generation capacity state, which we don't have anymore. The new rates reflect the current market environment, as I said before, and then the new rates encourage consumption without significant impact for customers. So what it does is, if you have a standardized rate for your residential customers, it allows the customer to make the choice. If you want to spend a lot of electricity, you want to keep your thermostat low and everything else, that's fine, but you're going to pay the rate that you're going to, if you want to conserve, if you want to keep the, keep the thermostat turned up, you want to put extra insulation, and you spend less, less on electricity, that gives the customer the right to make that choice. It's not the utility forcing the rate structure on them, telling them, "If you want to save less per kilowatt hour, then you need to use this." We want the customer to have the choice, customer control what they do.
But are you incentivizing that?
No.
Conservation?
No. We do not, we don't have a conservation program here. I mean, I guess I'm not clear on your question.
Well, I mean, G B C for almost twenty years has had problems...
Money back, like savings, keep...
Not only money back, they, they've told them where, if you've got an electric water heater and you want to participate in a program between three o'clock and six o'clock in the evening, if you let them control it...
Well, quite a bit of that was done through G B C's wholesale power provider, the L C R A. And they did that through, and I came from San Marcos also, and also from the cities, so that was not so much driven by the utility as it was driven by the company who generated the electricity to incent that utility, because L C R A realized they were in a position of tight capacity, and they thought, "Well, we can do one of the things, we can build more power plants..."
Save, save the peak.
"...or we can shave the peak for our customers." If we had a deal like that through CPS Energy, we'd be glad to participate, because CPS Energy right now is not in a position where they're in a need to shave the peak or a lot, because CPS Energy has quite a bit of generation, and they're, and they're purchasing or building more as we speak. They want the Rio Magallos plant there on I-10 in Sehene, and every time we've opened the paper, they've bought into another solar plant or wind plant or things of that nature. It's not that CPS Energy doesn't want our customers to conserve, but it's not a good business model for CPS Energy right now to give Phelps, or Casterville, or Honda, or one of their other cities, two hundred thousand dollars a year to, to do these incentive type programs.
Basically, it's better for them to give the incentives to their own customers rather than to say Phelps and customers, Phelps customers to participate.
Right, and you're right, they've got a million of their own resale, retail customers that live in their system, that they'll focus their money. L C R A, on the other hand, does not have retail customers, they only have forty-three wholesale customers, like we are to CPS Energy. So no, and Phelps, a, a system of Phelps size, we could give incentives for energy conservation or for people to put in solar panels, but quite honestly, it's just something we would have to work into our budget, and it's just not something that has had a lot of interest from us, and it's just not something that we've worked into our rate and cost of service study. If we, if it's something that, you know, Phelps Board or the citizens want us to do, we're glad to do it, but with that comes a cost, and that, and, you know, let's say we put a hundred thousand dollars in our budget next year to do energy conservation, and put insulation on all the homes in the territory, then we're going to have to redo this study because we're going to have to collect another hundred something thousand dollars, or two hundred thousand, or whatever, through the rates. We just can't print that money to, to give out to the customers. Slide seven, we, we touched on that, revision of tariff, reduce redundancy. One of the things that we do have right now is we have a residential rate class, and we have an all-electric rate class for our residential customers. The all-electric rate class is a dinosaur, it is something that has, has gone away. There's not very many utilities in the state that still have an all-electric rate class for their customers, and the ones that do have very strict restrictions on who can participate in the all-electric rate class. For example, it must be a single-family permanent home, so therefore, any rental property, duplexes, fourplexes, apartments, or, or manufactured homes, mobile homes, are not eligible for that rate. You have to build your house to a certain efficiency standard, you have to have certain efficient air conditioners and water heaters, so once they, once you start meeting on that criteria, there's not many customers who actually qualify to get that rate. And again, the all-electric rate was developed back in the eighties to incent people to use more electricity, you know. Don't put propane in your home, don't put a wood burning fireplace in your home, put an all-electric heat pump with heat strips and, and everything else in your home, and we'll, we'll get, we'll cut you some slack on your electric bill to pivot. Again, we, we talked about modernization throughout the system, and one of the things to modernize is, is to, quite honestly, is to do away with an all-electric rate class. And out of our twelve thousand electric, residential customers right now, is roughly fifty-fifty that are on the all-electric rate, isn't that right? Yeah, fifty, that are on all-electric versus those that are not on the all-electric rate. So it's not like this is a rate that, that, you know, eighty, ninety percent of our customers will have. Only about half of our residential customers are on this rate anyway, and so... And then I mentioned the school rate before, you know, we had, we had a special school rate, it wasn't a very good rate, first of all, therefore, there's a lot of the school buildings and school district offices that were not even on the school rate, even though we have a school rate out there, because it was more beneficial for them to be on our regular commercial rate. Slide eight, Steve, do you want to go through the next couple?
Sure. The next couple of slides identify more specifically the changes that we're proposing in the rate classes. In the residential and all-electric rate class, we're proposing to combine those two rate classes, the goal being to reduce some redundancy, reduce some incentive for excess consumption, and to reduce some of the administrative burden that comes along with verifying the, the, an all-electric home is built to certain criteria and built to certain standards, which may not be achieved anyway at this point. So we're moving away from that, moving away from declining tiered rates that we talked about, and just a single rate, that's more reflective of where we are in the state from a generation capacity perspective, it's also mirrors your CPS contractor, Phelps' CPS contract that serves the wholesale energy for the system. And I think it'll simplify invoice calculations for the customers and the utility, rather than to figure out a series of rates to get to your total bill. It's one rate plus a customer charge gives you your total bill, and that, that's the goal there. And then with increasing the customer charge, this is going to help the utility from a budgeting perspective, it's also going to help reduce the rates a little bit, because we're putting more of the fixed component in that customer charge, and taking some of it out of the energy charge, and mitigate the impact to some of the high usage customers that we have on the system. So all of that with the goal of modernizing the rate, some, moving away from that declining tiered rates and getting a structure that's more in line is what we see in the industry today.
What's the difference in the, right now in the percentage from the all-electric rate to the, to the residential rate?
Let me see, the, the all-electric rate was roughly, was it ten, about ten or twelve percent cheaper? Am I remembering that right, Marcy? Than the, than the non-all-electric rate?
The customers with gas and electric?
Right.
Or... The rate for percentage was...
It's not a big discount that the, the all-electric customers getting, but it, but it was, it was a discounted rate, and it was, we can look this up, Michael will report back.
That's okay.
But it, but it was, it was roughly a ten percent discount.
So what, what, what would initially happen with the rate increase, that you would, that percentage would go up for all-electric to meet up to, to meet up to a electric gas?
Well, we're going to bill them all the same, first of all.
And what, what do you, what do you would go up?
Yeah, and we've got a comparison, we'll show you each one, what, how each rate class is going to be affected, so, yeah, we're, we're getting to that.
Oh, okay.
All right.
It's okay.
On the rate cha, changes for general service and large commercial, one of the things that we've noticed in the rates as we went through this was that your commercial customer, there's a very wide variety in terms of the size of customer in the commercial rate class. Your current tariff went from zero K W a month to a thousand K W a month, so a very small customer can be lumped in the same rate class as a greater, a large customer. Thousand K Ws are quite large, you know, commercially, even bordering on into an industrial sized customer.
For, for, I'll give you an example, the Texalloy plant was being built at the same rate this Scoops was being built, we got right here next door.
So very different cost to serve those two customers. So what we've done is break that rate class into a couple of different ones. Now we're going to have a small, medium, and large commercial rate class, so three different rate classes in there, plus adding an industrial rate class that, that is more reflective of cost to serving a very large class of customers. Removing the school rate customers rather than having a separate school rate like we have, you remember, Kyle said at the beginning, we had some schools that were in the school rate, some schools that were in whatever the appropriate commercial class was, so we really didn't even have equity in, in terms of how the schools were being built. Removing all the schools into whatever the appropriate class is for them, if they're of the size that meets a small commercial, that's the rate they get built, if they're the size that meets a medium commercial, they get built at that rate. We're not distinguishing between a school and a commercial class customer anymore, but we are going to distinguish between the size, so if, if there's a cost of serving a smaller school on the system, they're going to get the same cost of serving them as the same size small commercial customer, if it's a very large school on the system, they'll get the, the cost associated with it.
How do you distinguish between a medium and a large? Where's the cutoff?
The cutoff is, well, I think it's a hundred K W, three five to a...
Well, small commercial is zero to twenty-five K W peak demand, medium is twenty-five to a hundred K W peak demand, this is based on the metering that we get, a meter is going every month. Large goes from a hundred to five hundred, and then over five hundred is what is led us to an industrial class. So, and I'll give you another example, Fortsville High School out here has one big master meter on it, that pulls about a thousand K W a month, that's a big meter. We were billing at the same rate as a little single meter they have on a portable building, you know, and so, I mean, that was, you can't tell us that cost to utility, the same amount to serve those two entities.
And it's run off for twenty years. So can the rate actually fluctuate, you know, from, you know, from one year or one month to the next?
Not the rate, the rate will stay the same, now obviously their consumption may change. Now, they, the more electricity, the more capacity, obviously, but, but the rate at which we build them is going to stay the same. Now, we'll still have that P C R F component that we have every month built, that's the direct pass-through from what CPS Energy bills us. But I'm talking about the rate that Phelps bills to the customer for hire money. The customer charge, the energy charge, and then of course we'll have the CPS, the P C R F charge. We called it the T P P A for a long time, but that's another quite outdated way of, way of calling it.
Can I make a suggestion, just because we're like fourteen minutes away from our meeting?
Yeah.
Can we get into more of the rates, can we, because we can read these slides in right now?
Absolutely. What you'll see here is the staple here, we just copied these on two page, on the front back to save a little time here, but each one of these, it, it looks the same, and it's just, but the language is a little different, they're all sort of the same. What you'll see, the first page here is the, is our residential tariff. What it amounts to is, you've got application, that's the standard boilerplate language character of service, but if you look under the heading, it's called monthly bill, your minimum service charge on the, for the residential, it'll be fifteen dollars a month, just, just to have your metered in. And we're going to bill you at about seven point four six cents per kilowatt hour, plus the P C R F, whatever we get from CPS Energy. Flip to the next page, you'll see the small commercial, electric tariff.
So what is it currently now, the monthly service charge?
The monthly service charge now for residential is nine forty-three, but the all-electric is thirteen thirty-one, so...
And then as far as the energy charge, how is that compared to?
Well, remember, we have that declining block, so, I mean, it wasn't a consistent energy charge, it wouldn't have. So the residential right now, you paid about ten cents for your first block, you paid about eight cents for your second block, and on the all-electric, you were paying about seven point two cents for your first block, six, a little over six cents for your second block, but you paid a higher customer charge on the all-electric side. So it, it became really difficult to take, right, it wasn't, we're not breaking a separate here to a new separate that we're putting in place.
So this is seven cents across the board?
Correct.
We're already, we're already going to use it?
Right, you can use ten kilowatt hours or ten thousand kilowatt hours in your home, and you're going to be billed at seven point four six cents.
So it's a fixed rate?
Fixed rate, throughout, yes. Except, again, I'm going to stress, except for the P C R F, it's pass-through to CPS Energy. That will fluctuate based on...
With the addition or subtraction, whatever.
Something, you know, the price of coal or gas goes up, you know, that goes up, if it goes down, it goes down, and things like that. We're trying internally to stabilize that as much as we can for the customers, but sometimes it's not always possible. Turn the page, it's same, same issue, same setup we had before as the residential rate, but the small commercial tariff, but on small commercial, we're going to have their monthly charge at thirty dollars, which again, this was a, it was at about ten dollars, so this is a, a, an increase for the small commercial, but their, their energy rate's nine and a half cents a kilowatt hour, which it was, it was fifteen for their first tier, ten for their second tier, and seven for their third tier. So, I mean, there's their first set of kilowatt hours, I mean, they were paying fifteen cents a kilowatt hour, now we got it down, but levelized at nine.
Do you have an example there, like an average bill of, say, a small commercial?
Yeah, the, our small commercials, we looked at the small commercials, they had an average bill, average consumption about eight hundred and sixty-seven kilowatt hours a month. It's just kind of their average, we looked at our system. And they had a demand charge to go with that, they had a customer charge, we, we'll bill them six dollars and forty-four cents per K W demand, no, six dollars and forty-four cents in demand, and then different, it would, get to the point, small commercial rate was about, would come out to, on average, a hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-one cents. Under the new rate, it's going to come up to about a hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-five cents. Even with the three percent across the board increase, a way of proposing, we'll see our small commercial customer will see about a one point one percent decrease.
And so the sample, the sample you use in a school, like the little module that we want, that would actually follow the small commercial?
It would, it would.
And what is the governing entity, the city itself, is we would follow it as long as we...
Depending on what your peak demand is, that's metered each month. Another thing that, that Steve mentioned before, if you notice, and we're billing demand starting at four kilowatts, that's the same, quite honestly, that's, that's very small. We couldn't find another utility that billed demand less than twenty-five kilowatts. That, and the second thing is, we don't have the equipment, the metering in place in the field, billed that well. We were taking their consumption, doing a mathematical equation, and estimating their demand, which I think is taking a disservice to our customer, quite honestly.
So like your small, what we own businesses, I mean, like the Taco Hops, do that fall into this small commercial?
Most likely they would, because they're, most likely their peak demand will never exceed twenty-five K W, so we just build straight energy charge and their customer charge, and that's it, just like we would at home, but just at a different rate. But if you flip the page and get to the medium commercial, you see there's a couple of more components, another component involved here, medium commercial, and again, this is twenty-five kilowatt demand up to a hundred, their monthly charge is higher at sixty dollars, but look at their energy charge, it's only seven point three cents a kilowatt hour. That's cheaper than what we billed the, the rate to the, to the small commercial, but look at there, they have a demand charge of two dollars and fifty cents per K W. So if they had a, you know, a twenty-five K W demand, multiply that by two dollars and fifty cents also on their bill, comes up to sixty-two dollars and fifty cents additional bill. So, they get a little bit less of an energy charge, but they also have an added demand charge in there. Flipping to the large commercial, now this is any customer that exceeds a hundred kilowatt demand up to five hundred. I think that would be a little bit higher monthly service charge, but again, you look at their energy charge, a little less. But then look at their demand charge, because that's what makes it expensive for us to serve. Because we need the bigger wire, the bigger transformers, things like that to handle the bigger demand. Delivering energy from point A to point B is pretty cheap. It's the peak demands that put a stress on our system. That's what's expensive for us.
So, in the beginning, you mentioned that there'd be an increase for commercials. I mean, like the first example you gave of the small commercials, that there's a slight decrease.
Well, I'll go for this.
Is that gonna be, I guess, on your larger commercial business, are they gonna see the increase?
Correct, correct. And then finally, then you get over here to the industrial rate tariff. Now, this is a special tariff of anybody that's over five hundred K W. And quite honestly, we don't have that many customers in our system that would fall into the industrial category right now. But with the oil field being what it is, there's always the possibility of another hospital being built, a Home Depot coming into the territory, there's never been a, maybe a desalination plant. You know, that's a big deal down in Eagle Ford Shell area. We might get one of these. I think there's a potential development out at Busas Ponco, the Mission Rail project. There can be some significant customers coming on board. We want to have a rate that's ready for that if it comes along. We may not ever utilize this rate, but we have a ready-to-go rate if that happens. But you see, their monthly service charge is a thousand hour a month. But their, look, their energy charge goes all the way down to six cents and their demand charge is five dollars per K W. And then something else this does is any customer that exceeds a thousand kilowatt hours or a thousand kilowatt demand, it gives us the right to possibly negotiate a rate with them. If we find a customer that, we'll do an individual cost of service study on just that customer instead of assistant wine. And if we can offer them a better rate, it might be an incentive for economic development, then we'll do that. Of course, any rate has to be negotiated, approved by the Phelps Board and approved by the Fortisville Council. But it gives us the opportunity, if one of these big customers wants to come to the territory, that we can possibly do something with the economic development councils, get them here. The following page you see is called outdoor recreational lighting. We just changed the name of this. It used to be called ballpark lighting, but as I mentioned before, we've got rodeo arenas and roping arenas and things like that. It's not just ballparks anymore. So, we called it outdoor recreational lighting. This is one area that we found was grossly underpaying for about the cost of service that they had. So, you'll see, they, no demand charge on this, but they were being billed demand in the past. But their monthly service charge is thirty dollars, but you look, they're seventeen and a half cents a kilowatt hour for these customers. But mostly, these customers will be writing their energy at night when the sun goes down, until the sun comes up the next morning. They're off peak. Nonetheless, we spend quite a bit of money running our lines, our wire, putting our meters in for these ballparks, these outdoor recreational lighting areas that have, quite honestly, very little return for the system.
Where does the community center fall in this?
The community center on ninety-seven would fall under a regular commercial customer based on its peak demand. I don't know off the top of my head what its peak demand is.
Should I build for, for a lot of these buildings, do you know what it kind of runs or what it's gonna build?
No, I don't know, but I know that the lights there.